We have the presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We're going to go ahead and get started on time because we have a long meeting this evening and I want to make sure we get through everything. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening to celebrate the outstanding district in the state of Texas. So. As most of you probably know, the board was honored last year by HEB as the outstanding board in the state of Texas and it was quite an honor. Last night, a new board was chosen. Umble ISD now has that honor. I was thrilled to be part of the judging team for that this year and it was an amazing experience. If you don't shop at HEB, you should shop at HEB. They're awesome and they really took care of us and we were competing against some really exceptional districts and it was quite an honor to receive that award last night. As the board president and on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate Dr. Dupree, who is an amazing leader. He just made his five-year anniversary last week in Fort Ben ISD and that is quite a feat in five years to go from where we were five years ago now to the outstanding board in the state of Texas. And then I would also like to congratulate the team that sits around this table, our executive team, because we have amazing people. I've said this before, I think we have, I have said, I think we have the best team in the state of Texas and now HEB and a lot of other people agree with us, agree with me. So congratulations to you guys for all the hard work and congratulations to the 11,000 staff, teachers, administrators, transportation workers, cafeteria workers, custodial staff, everyone who really made this award happen because it really does take everybody. So I just want to offer congratulations. So, that being said, we are going to have the facilities recommendations presented this evening and I know that's why a lot of you are really here and we appreciate you being here. I am going to ask as we go through it that everyone, we need to maintain some order. So I know that there are going to be things you're happy about and things you might not be happy about, but we need to get through the recommendations. This will be the first time, of course, the board as a whole is going through these and we'll be, we'll hear some of the information and be able to comment on that. We will be convening in closed session and so board members will be available to speak to you when we convene in closed session and as a lot of you probably know, we do that and we're happy to talk to you. So stick around and we'll talk to you when we convene in closed session. And we will, we will have a public comment time. This is a board workshop, which is different than our regular meeting. This is a working meeting for us, so this is where we hear a lot of the items that we're going to be voting on next week. So it's a review. So it's a little bit different than our regular board meetings run and so our, our comment time is at the end because comment has to relate to what we've reviewed in the agenda. And so I, I know that I have a list or I have a stack here of people who signed up to speak and so we will be doing that at the end and it looks like everyone's comments are going to be on the facilities recommendations, which is, is on our agenda, so that's absolutely acceptable. The other thing is that our board operating procedures for workshops limits comment to 15 minutes. And so thank you to those of you who coordinated and, and we are going to go a little bit longer than 15 minutes because we will, I'll let each speaker have two minutes and that'll run us right about 18, right about 18 minutes. So we'll do that at the end. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that, that that's how that will run this evening. Okay, without further ado, let's get started with our first item on our agenda and that is to review the proposed recommendations for the facilities master plan. Thank you, Ms. Tassan, board members. We're pleased to be here this evening to share with you our facilities master plan for 2018. And, and I want to point out as we do that, kind of to piggyback on what Ms. Tassan said about the district of the year for the largest school district in the state of Texas and that that would not be possible, of course, without a great team and a great board, but a great community because it's, it's very easy to work for a wonderful community with lots of people who care about kids and care about the right things, even through challenging times. So I think it's important to note that as we, as we move forward this evening. The draft plan that you all have in front of you this evening serves as our, as a framework for our future planning. It is the 2018 update and we'll be going through it this evening. As we worked through this process with the steering committee and with feedback from the larger community, it was important that we ensure that we're being fiscally responsible as we move into the next five to 10-year period with that long-term solution as our goal and looking at very clearly through the rearview mirror, communities that have been impacted in the past and the trend data that shows growth or decline in certain areas so that we're making decisions that are fiscally responsible, that, that to the greatest degree possible do not impact our MNO over time and those gaps that we might be facing, but that we were cognizant of ways in which we can better utilize our facilities and make programmatic recommendations that may better utilize our facilities that don't have a detriment impact to our MNO budget over the foreseeable future. As you know, this evening, with this plan being a long-range plan and serving as that basis for future planning, we are not coming to you this evening to share recommendations for rezoning or specific recommendations about programming that is specific to a certain campus. What we are going to be presenting to you this evening are those recommendations associated with the use of our facilities. If any of those recommendations have with, associated with them or attached to them, the possibility for rebalancing enrollment or having to do some rezoning or establish boundaries, like as an example in the opening of a new school, that is a separate and standalone process that would include continuous communication and feedback from the community in a process very similar to the facilities master planning process, but it is not a predetermined zone and that would have to be scoped out and planned according to the timeline that we're going to be sharing with you this evening. The same holds true for any innovative programming that we're sharing with you this evening. We would scope that work according to the dates that we've set forth for identifying when those needs are critical and then we would work that plan accordingly. So for tonight's presentation, we have with us Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies and he has served in the facilitation role for our district, knowing the data. He's worked with us through the past few years when we started the facilities planning process back in 2013. And so he's able to share that data with us and, and guide the work. So it kind of is an objective third-party participant, guide that work of the steering committee and the work of staff. He'll be giving you an update to the process this evening and a summary of, of the work that was concluded by the steering committee last week. He'll talk through the recommendations, alternate recommendations in some instances and other ideas for consideration as well as impacts that, that may come from the particular recommendations. And I mentioned in the beginning, none of this, none of this work is possible at all from staff alone. It's the work of the steering committee, the tireless efforts and dedication of the steering committee to have conversations that were critical and not always easy and challenging, yet doing that in public and in front of other people who were, were concerned and critical about some of those conversations. So I just want to take this opportunity to ask any of our steering committee members who are with us this evening, and I know not everyone could be here, but if you are here, could you please stand and be recognized for the time, effort, emotion, blood, sweat, tears, basically, that you put into this effort? And Scott and I are doing a lot of the talking this evening, but really and truly, none of the work would be possible at all without the leadership of our executive director of strategic planning, Dr. Alice Ledford. So I'm going to ask Alice to stand up. She's been just instrumental in this whole process. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Scott to lead you through the recommendations.
Okay, thank you. It's nice to be here. I just want to start off by first kind of overviewing our planning process. I'm not going to spend too much time on this. I just want to make sure that we understand the, the general gist and the flow of this. We started with data collection, so the PASA data, the PDK data that we had throughout the process. We then reached out to the community in educational framework setting where we, this was back, I believe, in February, we had two meetings, talked about high-level, you know, high-level visions for educational components like school size, those types of things. All of that data was then vetted through the steering committee and the board of trustees and then they came back and we used that data to kind of study, set parameters or an envelope, develop recommendations within the committee. Those, those initial options were then shared with the board of trustees and then shared with the community again for, for feedback. And we had four of those meetings that we had in April to collect that feedback. We had over 21,000 responses, some of which may have been repetitive. And then, we then took that feedback back to the committee to, to kind of narrow down some final recommendations at the committee level. Those recommendations were then delivered to the administration to make final recommendations to the board and that's where we are today. And so we're looking at draft recommendations that were informed by feedback from the committee. I want to just make, just a few words to say about the committee. I thought it was a great group, very objective and some of them want to continue to be involved and perhaps in some programmatic conversations that could be forthcoming. As we go into the recommendations, please consider the following. These recommendations are focused on facilities that require decisions that impact capital funding. And so every facility is likely going to have some kind of, you know, project or renovation that's attributed to it in a future possible bond cycle. But those actual projects and the scope of those renovations will be determined in the bond planning process. And so we'll be talking today about kind of those schools that have those decision points, so new construction, renovation, et cetera. Or I'm sorry, new construction additions, et cetera. Just to start, what we've done is we've kind of grouped some feeder patterns together that kind of had overlaying implications across feeder patterns. And so this first slide shows our recommendations for the Austin, Travis and Bush feeder patterns. First recommendation is to expand the capacity at Elementary 51 from 850 to 1,000 during the construction process. The timeline, this would, this would still be on schedule, will open in the fall of 2019. Then build an addition on Neal Elementary for approximately 250 students or 12-pack to increase the capacity from 850 to over 1,000. This would be needed by the fall of 2020. Build an addition at Madden Elementary for approximately 200 students or 10-pack to increase the capacity from 850 to 1050. And this would be needed by the fall of 2020 and I think it's, or 2022. And I think what's important is that you have to basically use Elementary 51 to unload that building so the portables can come off for the addition to go on. This just gives us a, a kind of a detailed map of the area and so you can see we have our addition at, at Madden, addition at Neal and then Elementary 51 in that location. The impacts that we have here, the additional capacity created between the new school and the two additions would keep the utilization within policy FC local parameters over the next 10 years. So we'd be at 96% in '22, '23, which is five years out, and then 110% in '27, '28. Some additional long-term considerations. The utilization at Oakland is between 100 and 120%, 20% over the next 10 years very consistently. Consider a permanent addition to replace the temporary buildings at that site. And so that's, again, one of those longer-term considerations that will be beyond a, that would be, that would be beyond 2024. Other considerations to keep in mind, there is additional capacity available in adjacent schools to the east. Utilizing this capacity may disrupt feeder alignment. And so, again, we have that capacity, it's just in a different feeder pattern.
All right, thank you, Scott. I think the way we're going to proceed, board members, is that they will make a recommendation and then we will open it up for questions and comments from board members and that way we can, instead of having to digest all the information and go back and make comments. So I'm going to open it up now for questions or comments from the board members on this first recommendation. Mrs. James.
Okay, so a couple of things. The last thing I heard you say was that there, there would be capacity without additions, but that would disrupt feeder patterns to make that existing capacity work. Is that correct? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So if we're trying to keep the feeder patterns aligned, then really we need more capacity within the, is that all in Austin? In the, is that those additions? Oh, no, not Neal. Neal's in the Travis.
Yes, it would be within Austin, Travis and Bush.
Which of those are in Bush?
The schools that are in Bush are Holly, Mission Glen, Mission Bend, Mission West, Jordan, Patterson, Saginaw.
Okay, but we're not putting any additions on those schools?
No.
Okay, that's where the capacity is.
Yeah, that's where the capacity is.
Got it. That's where the capacity is, but the additions would add capacity in the Austin feeder pattern.
Austin and Travis.
Austin and Travis, thank you. Okay, and then my second question is, I remember the building envelope at Madden was kind of restricted, I guess. Do we, does that building have core capacity to hold an addition?
Yes, ma'am, it, it does. We presently have four portables there, so we, we literally have eight classrooms. This would be just an additional two in a 10-pack and it would be able to.
Okay, so the core of the building can support the addition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And how many temporary buildings do we have at Oakland Elementary right now?
At this point, we have six at Oakland Elementary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have additional questions from the trustees? Mr. George?
Excuse me. I have one question. There's a recommendation to add additions to, permanent addition to Neal Elementary. And this is a school we opened this, last fall, correct? So my question is, why we didn't plan in such a way? Because we just opened it, we already need to put additions. And so first thing I wanted to know is, what is the cost difference between when you're building a structure and when you're adding X number of, you know, capacity? There is a price difference?
Yes, sir. The price difference that we're looking at right now is the, you know, probably between four and five million dollars to, to add the 10-pack. But to answer your original question, we did, that school was built for 850 with 1,000 cores, so the core is in place and it already has decimated areas for the addition to fit. It's, it's always a fine line when you are building, you know, to, to build in additional capacity that may take a few years to fill. So it's not necessarily poor planning, it's just that you have to look at, you know, where the dollars need to go and you have to stretch those.
Okay, so you're saying that the initial intention was to build ultimately 1,000 capacity, but we didn't build, you know, we just built 850 and then we come to know we need this additional capacity, so we are doing it?
Yes, sir. All of our elementaries that we're building now, we're, we're putting in a core for 1,000. We're initially building them for 850.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question.
Thank you, Mr. George, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, Scott, I just want to make sure I understand something. So what you, what I think I heard you say was that when we start working on the addition at Madden, you said that there'd be kids there that would have to move somewhere. Now, are you, were you saying to move to the, into the new school, into 51 temporarily or?
I think it would just have to be a consideration as we're determining what the boundaries are for 51. That, that we'd have to have enrollment at a certain level in order to have the portables off of Madden. I don't think we would want to move them to 51 unless they're going to stay there.
Okay. Okay. But there are other options as well.
Yes.
Right. Because we did just build those additions at Holly.
Yes, sir.
And then now it's, you know, under capacity, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. Mr. Perez, I'm, I'm following up on, on Mr. George's question. Yeah, I think it was a good question. But I recall after we passed the 2014 bond, that we made a board decision, I'm going off memory, to construct all of the new schools in that bond with the core of 1,000 students. And so that was an intentional decision that we, as you're saying, it's difficult to gauge how many people or when they're going to move in. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, sir, that, that is correct. That there, there was a change from the time the bond passed to the time the buildings were being designed, there was, the spec was changed to include 24th century attributes. So the square footage grew and then also we were directed to go ahead and build 1,000 core, 850 student.
And that was done so that if we did need to add an addition, the core would already be sized for the addition?
That is correct.
And, and why is that important, Mr. Perez? To have the core sized for 1,000 students?
Well, it's important, so what, what happens so many times is that as you add student capacity, you end up with, you know, four or five lunch periods and children are eating at, you know, 10:00 in the morning. The gymnasiums are not adequate also when they're having their B class. So it's, it's definitely important to go ahead and have a larger core.
So the increased number of lunch periods, does that cut into the instructional time and the number of teachers required to monitor the lunchroom?
Sir, I would have to defer to curriculum to answer that question.
It does, Mr. Rice. You know, whenever you have multiple lunches, obviously it's going to have, I mean, you're going to need multiple staff members to make sure that, that the students are safe in the lunchroom and to make, make sure they have adequate supervision.
Okay, so, okay. So in hindsight, that was probably a good decision to expand the core to 1,000 students when we made that.
Yes, sir, it was a very good decision.
One last comment. I, as I recall, when I got on the board in 2010, and Dr. Dupree, maybe you can help me with this, but as I recall, we began the school term in August of 2010 with almost 1,000 fewer students than we ended the 2000, in May of 2010. And that's because the economy was kind of in malaise and Aliana had not yet been repositioned and Telfair had not yet taken off. So I guess that's to your point, Mr. Perez, that it's sometimes difficult to judge when these neighborhoods are going to really, really take off. And it wasn't until, I think, maybe 2012 before Aliana really started to catch fire. But anyway, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Mr. Berdine.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the comment that I'm happy to see that there's going to be some extra room. I know that there is some capacity to our east, but I do live in the area and I do know it is growing very quick. And I feel like in the future, and not too far in the future, we're going to need that extra capacity, especially in that area. I, I also do know that there are still quite a few students that live in the Aliana area that do not go to public schools. So I feel like we could gain some more students with the correct capacity in the area. So anyway, that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Okay, so my only comment or question is that we're, the recommendation is to add these additions to Neal and Madden and build Elementary School 51, which is kind of currently underway, so to speak, in that we've bought the land and we're getting ready to approve contracts. What will be the price difference at this point to increase from the 850 to 1,000 right now? And, and do we have the funds now to be able to do that?
Well, as you're recalling, we will be bringing that to you all tonight. But as, as you recall, this is a resolution to, so literally the, the funds truly are not there until we pass them on. But I think that you will be pleased with what we're going to be bringing forward. So I would say that we would be probably about a million and a half short of what we originally came to y'all and, and asked for because we have some, some good dollars coming forward. So we're, we're looking at, probably to answer your question, about four and a half million to go ahead and get that done.
About four and a half million?
Correct.
Okay. And then the expectation is that obviously we'll have to go through a rezoning process in that area as 51 opens and as we build these additions. So when do we expect that to start taking place? That, that process where we go to the community and do the engagement and have this rezoning process begin?
We're planning for Elementary School 51 to come online for the 19, the 2019-2020 school year. And so we would begin that engagement process with all of the communities in that area that may be impacted or could be impacted by a boundary established for 51 this coming fall, in the fall of 18. We would begin the planning process and the engagement process to follow the timeline in our policy FC local to bring a recommendation to the board in January to implement for the 19-20 school year when the school opens.
Okay, so the school is projected to open in 1920 and we would start that process this coming fall?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be the students that would be impacted by the Madden addition, the Neal addition and Elementary School 51 opening?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions right now, so let's go to the next recommendation.
Our next feeder pattern is Clements and we've kind of divided Elkins into two different pieces. We're going to take the elementary schools in Elkins that are south of Six and so that's basically all the elementary schools in Clements plus Sullivan. So the recommendation in this area is to build an addition on Commonwealth for approximately 250 students or 12-pack, increasing the capacity from 743 to 993. And then we'd have to possibly do some rezoning to balance enrollment down the road and I'll talk to that a bit more in a second. Again, we would not need to rezone until '22, '23 and by that time, the cohort of students that would have been rezoned in the last process will have been out of the facility. The, the capital cost for this one is 4.9 million for that addition. The alternative recommendation that we have in this area is to construct a new elementary school for approximately 850 students in the Riverstone area. Again, this would be needed as soon as possible, possibly by the fall of 2020 if the land can be, be procured and the big piece of that is if the land can be procured. Here's our map that just kind of shows our general area. So addition on Commonwealth and this would be the area that would be looking, looking to find land for an additional facility in Riverstone. The impacts that we have here, the utilization, the, the classroom addition to bring the utilization at Commonwealth to 108% in 1920, 124% in '22, '23 and 130% in '27, '28. Some longer-term considerations, we'd want to consider possibly additions to Austin Parkway or Settlers Way and then perhaps rezoning to balance enrollment, but again, that's beyond 2024, '25. Other considerations that we have here, we did update a capacity number. The staff, you know, did another, took another look at Colony Meadows and our capacity now is 836 due to some recent program location. And so we originally had a, originally had a, an addition on that facility, but due to that change in capacity, it's no longer needed. Just as far as the alternative recommendation goes, again, that new school, that would eliminate overutilization for the foreseeable future, surely with, within the last, next 10 years in that area. Overall utilization between Austin Parkway, Colony Bend, Colony Meadows, Commonwealth, Settlers Way and Sullivan and the new school would be below 100% over the next 10 years. And so adding that capacity would, would kind of be that, that more permanent solution for that area. One thing that I just wanted to point out is this is a map that we have from the PASA study and we did, we did receive some, some feedback from the community about land that's available and I just wanted to kind of show the, the flood areas because we don't necessarily, we don't want to put a school in a flood, in a flood zone or flood plain. And so I just thought it was very important to bring this map up to just kind of make sure that everybody's aware of that. So I'm going to go back now. Okay.
So talk us, talk us, go back to the flood map.
Sure.
And tell us what we're looking at, please.
Okay, so this is, this is in the PASA report. This is on page 42. It shows the theme of flood zones for the entire district. And so if we've got an area that's in the kind of mustard color here, that would be a floodway. And then if it's in the green area, it's protected by a levee. And then there are 500-year flood zones and 100-year flood zones that the, the federal government identifies. And so these are areas that, that would be more undesirable to have a facility in unless it's protected by a levee.
Okay, and, and are we showing available land on that or are we just showing where the flood plains are?
We're just showing where the flood plains are. We're just showing where the floodplains are. I have it at the end of the presentation, but there's no land for sale in that area per the PASA report that we got in February, floodplain or not.
All right, thank you. Questions from the trustees, Mr. Rosenthal?
So as you mentioned, we have been told that there's land available, but you're saying it's not actually on the market?
I believe so. You know, I'm just going off that PASA data that we had. Oscar, go.
Yes, we actually will have a report to y'all in closed session to let you know what the findings are.
Okay, okay. But in this report, it didn't mention that there's, like you said, there are, there are areas there, and some of those may have been the ones mentioned, but they're kind of in a floodplain. And so I'm not sure, like you, like, and like you said, I'm not sure we'd want to, you know, make major investments inside, you know, 100-year floodplain, certainly not in a floodway. And there was a piece that supposedly, you know, again, somebody sent me an email. And you, we've talked about this a couple of times. Are we at a point, and I mentioned it to you the other night, is this something I should bring up now, or should we wait?
I think it would be best if we did wait on that.
Okay, all right, okay. So really, what I'm trying to look at here is if there was acreage available, and you, you know, we had that conversation over the phone. Even if you could put in like a K through one, K through two, and you can get enough kids, you know, into that, you know, in that Riverstone area, so that you wouldn't have any need for that zoning, you know, five years from now. I think that would be a great solution. And I think that's, you know, and we'll find out when we talk about available land. But I think that would be really the best solution if, if the land is available. And I think, you know, obviously, it may not need to be as big a school. So the cost, especially if you start talking about, you know, adding on to, which we were talking about that until you brought this Colony Meadows information to us here tonight. We were talking about possible additions at Austin Parkway and Settlers Way. And so, you know, you might spend a little more with a new facility, but, you know, it wouldn't be as much because you wouldn't have to do those. So anyway, just that, those are the things that I'm kind of looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rice.
Mr. Perez, if we were to build a school in the floodway, and Mr. Leopold, could you go back to that? I can't read that very well. The mustard color you said was the floodway. And the blue, is that, is that 100-year floodplain? And the, kind of the light blue, okay, is the 500-year? So if we were going to build in that area, if we decided to do that, how would, what would we have to do to mitigate the risk to the school flooding?
Well, sir, we would definitely have to negotiate something with the developers to go ahead and provide, in the muds, to provide us some protection with the levee.
Would, how much distance are we talking about? How much elevation would we bring in additional fill and raise the level of the finished floor? Or what would we do? Build a dike around it?
Yes, sir, I don't have that information at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. George.
Thank you. I'm just, you know, piggybacking on Mr. Rosenthal just mentioned. I think we had a brief conversation about it, an elementary school versus long-term room addition to maybe around four elementary school. Do you have any numbers exactly how much it is going to cost the room additions versus the elementary school? Recommendation?
It, we have the information. I don't have it right in front of me, but there, it's, there's probably about a 12 to 14 million dollar difference between the additions and the new.
Okay, okay. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. Okay, so just to pick up on this, so what I'm hearing is that it would be a good idea to build an elementary school in the Riverstone area. Whoops.
I can go back.
Don't make me dizzy by switching the slide so fast. It would be a good idea to build an elementary school there, but we don't have a place to build it. So, all right, so for the short term, we're, and to help us also in the long term, you're suggesting an addition to Commonwealth. And is the core at Commonwealth, will it handle the, this size of the addition you're suggesting? 12 classrooms?
It, that is one that we wouldn't need to really look at the core and see if it's, if it's going to be an addition renovation where we would have to expand. I believe that it is, it'd be a pretty tight core.
Okay, so it might be a little more than the 5 million that you've kind of meant, we've kind of meant estimating on these additions.
Yes, ma'am, it could be.
Okay, so just another idea that I'll throw out there, kind of piggybacking on something Mr. Rosenthal said, is there, could we provide some relief to Sullivan through some kind of other innovative, you know, taking over a box store, store, or some kind of strip center, or something along those lines? And it kind of, if you're talking about a K1, you know, let's do it right next door to a daycare. Or let's, you know, join in. So I'm just thinking about that as an, as an alternative or something to explore. Where we could do a lease or, you know, I don't know what the options are, but just throwing that out there as a, as an idea. So, and then so, and I also understand you're not suggesting right at the minute to do additions on any of the, on any of the first Colony elementary schools. In other words, the Settlers Way, I guess that's, I don't know if that's considered First Colony. But Colony Ben, Colony Meadows, Settlers Way, Austin Parkway, we're okay for four or five years?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, good. But even with the addition at Commonwealth, we're still a little short 10 years out. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
Okay, so we will need an alternate solution or an additional solution to work that out. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Berdine.
So to bring this back in here, I got a little confused for a minute on the alternative recommendation and the recommendation. But if, and this is hard conversation to have, in my opinion, because we haven't talked about property yet. So if by chance we were not able to purchase a piece of property or there's no property available, and I guess an option would be, like Mrs. Jane said, to get creative with something that we have not yet done. But if we're not able to do, if we're not able to buy the property and we're not able to get creative, so to speak, can we meet our needs with additions in the area?
Yes. I mean, it's essentially if you put an addition on Commonwealth, you put an addition on Austin Parkway, you put an addition on Sullivan, you're adding a school through additions. One thing that I do want to just clarify, if land is able to be procured, you don't need the addition at Commonwealth. But it's just one of those things where can you get through the next three or four years, or three years, or however long it takes to get that new school online without an addition? Just one other consideration to put on there.
Okay.
I do want to interject on this conversation in particular. This is one of the decisions where, one of the recommendations that comes to the long-term viability of our operating budget. Because it's always going to be more fiscally prudent and responsible, in my view, to, to do incremental costs by doing an addition at a school. Because the minute you add a full-scale new building, you've added a permanent, long-term investment that we could have trouble sustaining unless the state comes in and really gives us a miracle in long-term funding, which we don't expect is going to happen. That's why we're trying to navigate through all of this in a way that's going to honor the integrity of our operating budget as well.
So that's a very good point, and that was going to be my question. Is that, you know, the difference between the additions versus the brand-new school, and what's the impact going to be on a budget that we are, have already cut 12 or 13 million dollars out of and still have another 5 million to go? With no, no end in sight, with no additional funding in sight. So I don't, I don't know how many of the community members were in here when we were going through the budgeting process, but that's really where we are right now, which makes a lot of these decisions particularly difficult. And it particularly makes making 10-year decisions difficult. Not just because of PASA data and whether or not the developers are going to build and whether or not, and when they're going to build and how they're going to build, but whether or not the state of Texas is going to fund public education at a level that is necessary to continue, not just building buildings, but, you know, staffing buildings. So that's, and keeping the lights on. So that's a concern of mine. I'm not necessarily opposed to the new school, like Mr. Rosenthal said, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. Provided we can even find land, but we are looking at having to, having to pay a new administration and staffing a new school and counselors and nurses and all the things, and lights and all the things that go along with that. So that gives me pause, I will say that. It gives me pause because it's looking like revenue is going to be flat. Is that correct, Mr. Bassett?
Yes, ma'am, that's what we're expecting. And just so, just to clarify as well, fixed costs for an elementary, just depending on the size, would be between 800,000 to a million. Utilities amazingly follow the kids, so do teachers.
Okay.
You know, so the utilities are where the kids are and where the teachers are. So if you did decrease and rezoned into one, you would have utility savings in other, in other places if you opened a new elementary. So, so anyway, just want to make that clear. But in terms of the staffing, it's, you know, up to a million, you can count it that way. Because remember, we just, you're opening a new middle school, it's two and a half, two and a half million to open a middle school in terms of the fixed costs, not counting the teachers. That'll, that'll be there.
So that's good information. Thank you for sharing that. So in, in my mind, if we, the alternative, the alternate recommendations are either to build the elementary school or the pre-K1 or whatever, whatever it is we're talking about, if we, provided there's land. Or I don't think just an addition on Commonwealth is the answer, because it sounds like we're going to be right back in the position we're in now if we don't also add additions to at least Austin Parkway, at least Austin Parkway. And even though I think you have 24, 25 up there as, as, you know, kind of being, I guess, the six years out, we don't know when we would be able to pass another bond, given that the governor has said he is going to propose constraints on, on us being able to do that. So this may, this may be the last bond we're able to pass, at least pass easily, or as easily as, as we have been able to in the past. So that gives me some pause as well. It concerns me that if we don't plan for these additions or plan for this capacity in some way now that we're going to get ourselves in a bind again where we can't pass bonds to do additions in the future. So that, that's my two cents as, as I'm thinking through this. Those are the things that, that I would be thinking about. And I'll be interested to hear the land situation, which I think will inform the decision a lot more. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, one other thing just to bring up, because you mentioned leasing, I think you may have mentioned it as well. And so I had, again, in that same phone conversation, I had brought that up, and we checked with Mr. Bassett. And leasing costs would come out of M and O, not, right? Yes, so something else to consider.
Bond?
Yeah.
It's not a bond cost, it's an M and O cost, an operating cost, yes. So, okay. Let's go move along to the next recommendation.
Okay, our next area is the middle schools in the Clements and Elkins feeder pattern. This kind of has two different parts to it. The first part would be an innovative programming solution to expand the GT Academy at Quail Valley. This would require some study in the next school year and perhaps implementation in the 1920 school year. The second part of this is to build an addition on First Colony Middle School for approximately 200 students, 10-pack, which would increase the capacity from around 1,200 to almost 1,400, and this would be needed by 21, 22. The projected utilization at Fort Settlement is projected to reach 124% by the 21, 22 school year, and then 135% by the 27, 28 school year. The GT program would need to draw at least 219 students out of Fort Settlement. Currently, it's drawing 57 to keep Fort Settlement under 120%. Some other considerations for this area, the maximum combined enrollment between both Quail Valley and Fort Settlement is projected to be 2877. I'm sorry, First Colony and Fort Settlement, correct that. It's combined to be 2877 is the maximum. The two campuses have a combined capacity of 2847 with the addition. So this kind of shows us that there's no need for an additional middle school in this area. That we have enough capacity there now, and it's not, it's not projected to exceed that in the near future.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Scott. Several questions. What is the current enrollment at Fort Settlement? And where I'm going with this is I'm trying to get what percentage that would be, what percentage 219 students pulled out of there would be?
The number that I have in the PASA report this year is 1427. But that includes, remember, that's current data, so that includes those 57 students at Quail Valley already.
But still, so 15, so yeah, you're looking at like 15% or something like that?
So the, so if we're at 1,400 times...
Because 20 would be 30, 300.
1680 would be 120% of Fort Settlement. And so drawing 200 out would, would get us down around 1461 would be the number.
Okay, but you said there's how many there now? How many students are there now?
All right, 14, 1427.
And the capacity is of that school?
Capacity is right around 1,400.
Okay, okay, so you'd need, you know, between 15, somewhere around 15% GT identified students to all want to go to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so that's one, one concern, but, but I, in general, I kind of favor the idea of of the academy, you know, of the program, you know, at Quail Valley Middle School as a separate academy for GT. The other thing to consider is, right now, at First Colony, do we still have students from Sienna, the northern part of Sienna? Yes. Okay, and so once Thornton opens, they'll start to, to leave. And so after a couple of years, they'll be completely out of there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there'll be a few temporary buildings that are sitting at First Colony, fairly new, that will be available, right, that can always go over to Fort Settlement Middle School, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I would like to, you know, just throw that out there, because that, that would help. And, and I have listened to and seen a presentation about an additional middle school, but I would agree with your recommendation here, with the district's recommendation here, that there's really not a need for a new one at this point. So especially, again, we'll find out more detail about the land, but from what I can tell, you know, it's all floodplain. So, okay, I think that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. So to pick up on what, uh, you were saying, uh, Mr. Rosenthal, I'm looking at a feeder pattern split map, and I have a passion for, you know, fixing these splits when we can. And I don't know, having, I don't, I don't think I have all the information, because I can't see obviously the, um, you know, where the kids are exactly, but it looks like we have a 25, 75 split between, um, Austin Parkway, um, going Clements, Elkins, and then we have sort of the reverse Settler's Way, um, 7030. I don't know if these numbers, how up-to-date these numbers are, but I'm just wondering if the most cost-effective solution is rebalancing between First Colony and Fort Settlement, if we have capacity, what, what was the timeline on this capacity? Five years?
So we'd need the addition, uh, between, between the two buildings in 21, 22, I think is the year that we hit policy at Fort Settlement.
You'd need an addition, or you'd need to rebalance?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you would need an addition, and you would need to rebalance.
You'd need an addition, and you'd need to rebalance?
Correct.
In three years?
Yes.
Okay, and the word possibly is there, is that because we don't know, we're not, we're not, why is the word possibly?
It's based on the projections, and, um, there is excess capacity in Fort, or in First Colony now. And so it would-
Okay, so it could, depending how the growth, where, where the growth happens and how it happens, is what you're saying?
I mean, you don't, we don't necessarily need to put the addition on First Colony. We can still balance enrollment between the two schools and just be over 100% and under 120. It's just that additional, that, that addition keeps us under 100%. So we would still be within policy without the addition, just balancing between the two.
All right, so I'm confused now. So we, so, as the schools exist right now, there's enough capacity in 2023, 24, whatever, between the two schools for the projected number of students we'd have in 23, 24, whatever the five-year, five years out is.
Yes, but the enroll, the utilization between the two schools would be over 100%.
Both schools would be over 100%?
Yes.
Okay, but we would have saved money because we wouldn't have done anything. We wouldn't have at, we wouldn't have built, spent 5 million dollars adding something. We would have gone through a pain, possibly, potentially, um, re, uh, attendance boundary changes, which, I guess, without looking at that, I can't see if that's really viable or reasonable. I guess, again, to go back to something Dr. Dupree said, if we, if we can avoid building permanent space, there seems to be some advantage of that, because building permanent space requires maintaining permanent space. I just don't know how disrupt, if we went that route, how disruptive it would be to, to those communities. And the second part of that is what I started with. It might, if we can fix feeder pattern splits, in the long term, it's better, I think, for our students and for their socialization as they move from their elementary to their middle school to their high school. If we can fix them, um, then I think that's to our advantage. So those are my, I guess, comments on that. I am surprised, because I had it in mind, I thought we needed more, you know, a lot more space between those two middle schools. Um, and so, um, I'm surprised we don't need additional space, so that's all, that's, that's good. Um, I'm op, I, like Mr. Rosenthal, I'm open to the, my comments on the GT program. I'm open to expanding it or trying to draw kids there. I'm a little worried that that's a strategy based on hope, but I don't know if that's, if that's, I don't know really what that is, because if we have kids that are starting in sixth grade and then leaving the program, then there must be a reason that they're leaving, whether or not we're filling those spots. So I guess, um, you know, we'd need to maybe look at why the kids are leaving, and what needs to be done to actually draw them there. Um, and, um, those are my, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Burdine?
So I also like the GT program idea, but if we are not able to attract those 200-plus students to the GT Academy, would we then have to build the additions to accommodate them? Would, would that work if we did build the additions? If we could not get all of those students over to, uh, Quail Valley?
I, I guess it's just a question of whether you want to be under 100%. If you want to be under 100%, you need the additions. If you're comfortable being between 100 and 120, you don't need the additions. You can just use the existing capacity.
Without assuming that they did not go over there?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, right. Well, I think that's great news then, so it seems like we're in good shape as far as this is concerned. And I'm, I'm happy to hear, like Mrs. James said, uh, I was just, didn't have all, all of my information, but now, uh, it's better than I thought, so, thank you.
Mr. George?
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Um, my question, again, I'm, uh, same concern I have, like Ms. James. Um, you mentioned, um, just in Riverstone, Abalone in Riverstone, that area alone, we were looking at, what was that number you said, how many student you projected to have?
I think we looked at the five-year number, it was, uh, it was, it was near 800 elementary students.
Approximately. So my question is, uh, if that number is projected that high, why we are not showing any need for additional middle school space?
I, I, I think it's just, it's in the projected data that we have for possible.
Hang on one second. So I, I asked earlier if, if we could not have any outbursts. I, I know these things are emotional, and there's good things and bad things, but if you guys can let, let the board ask the questions, I promise you, we will, we will get with you guys in the, in the break. Thank you.
I think the other, the other component of that is, is that currently we have, uh, First Colony is serving a, a portion of Sienna. And then once the new middle school comes online at Thornton, that will no longer be needed, and we'll have additional capacity that opens up at First Colony.
Okay.
And so, we, we have the capacity already at the middle school level to be able to, to serve those students that we have projected in the area.
Sure. And another question I have is, um, see, the Quail Valley Middle School capacity is 1555, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you said, um, Fort Settlement is 1,400.
Mm-hmm.
So why can't we put addition there if in case we need it?
Ask her.
An addition can be placed there, it's just, you know, it's an additional cost, not 5 million dollars.
Of course, that is additional cost, I, I understand that, but it is possible.
Yes, it is possible.
But what could be that number? Uh, what is the capacity we can add? Because, of course, the core area and stuff like that, we had to take into consideration, correct?
Yes, sir, I mean, it, uh, it could be up to a 12-pack, a 10 would probably be better.
Okay, 10 means how many students we are talking about?
Uh, you're looking at, uh, 250, approximately.
250, okay.
Okay.
And also, another question I have is about, um, um, uh, Quail Valley Middle School, expanding, uh, the GT Academy program. So, I, I know that program can draw, uh, students, um, because personally, my daughter went there, and one of the perception among, uh, the community is the, the quality of that program went down. That's what I hear from a lot of parents. So if we can sustain, uh, a good quality program, I know that that's going to draw, um, students. So what is the timeline we are looking at if we are looking to expand that program? When we would be able to do it, at what pace, or?
Well, um, at, currently, there's a program evaluation that's being conducted for the GT program, which will include program evaluation of the specific academy program at Quail Valley Middle School.
Sure.
So we'll get that, um, at the end of this school year. We'll use that to continue planning forward with our GT planning. We have a GT task force that, um, is building information for us to move forward. So I would say that we would, we would study what the program evaluation, um, tells us. Um, there would probably be some low-hanging fruit, if you will, that would allow us to, to, um, improve the programming pretty quickly. But long-term, um, program quality would, would, we would probably need to consider some longer-term planning. Um, but there may be some immediate, um, things that we can do that would ramp up the program.
Okay.
Depending on what the program evaluation says.
Sure. If we are going to, um, pilot it in such a way, maybe adding X number of seats and things like that, would you consider if that is, um, turned out to be a good decision, uh, creating a standalone, uh, GT Academy program at Quail Valley?
Well, I think that that's one of the options that we would need to look at, and we would need, I, I would say that we would go back to the GT task force. We would do some research on best practice in terms of, you know, standalone academy versus academy that would be integrated in a comprehensive middle school, if you will. Um, so we would go back to the GT task force to study that piece. Also, our GT parent advisory committee would provide input. Um, so, again, that would be part of a long-term conversation that we would want to have so that we could make the best decision for students.
Okay.
Thank you, that was my question, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. George. So I'm going to just start by piggybacking on that, and I'm going to just say at the outset that I believe we need to have a standalone GT Academy. Um, I think we have at least anecdotal evidence that the school within a school has not worked. Um, it, that it hasn't been good for students, that we have students in the zoned attendance boundary that feel like, um, you know, they're not part of the elite academy, so to speak. And then the academy students, I just, I, at least from what I've heard from students and from families, um, it's, it's not been good for kids. So I'm just going to put it out there that I think it should be a standalone GT Academy, especially if it's going to attract the stu, the number of students we need it to attract from surrounding middle schools, um, or middle schools from all over the district. Uh, so I think that that's something that, that we need to make happen, in my personal opinion. I just think that, that that's going to be better for kids. Um, I'm struggling with this recommendation, because, uh, I, I mean, I, like Mr. George, if the, if the capacity issues are at Fort Settlement, then why don't we build the addition to Fort Settlement? Instead of, I mean, if we're going to build an addition, if we know we have to build an addition to, or at least we have to have additional space in order to, you know, keep up with the capacity, keep up with the enrollment in that area, is there a reason we wouldn't build it on Fort Settlement and let, allow children who live, who are zoned there currently, continue going to Fort Settlement?
I believe that Fort Settlement would require a, a core expansion, so additional square footage added to the cafeteria spaces.
Is that true, Mr. Perez?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, give me an estimate, if you can, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if we're looking at 5 million to build an addition on First Colony, and we, I assume we don't need a core expansion there, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then what's the additional cost of a core expansion? Or what's, what are we looking at if we considered that?
Well, it'd be hard for me to give you a number. We would really have to get a, an architect involved and take a look at it, and see exactly what, uh, you know, how that is constructed, where the core actually lies. Because as you expand the core, then you get into other areas.
Okay.
Uh, it impacts other areas, and so to, to give you something here, I'd just be, you know, throwing stuff out.
Okay. Um, well, that was my question, because if that's where the growth is going to be, because we're looking at, even if, even if we build additions on to First Colony, um, we're about nine years out, looking at having to do something again. So I'm just looking at that as we look, you know, as we project out into the future. This is not a permanent fix. Um, again, I guess, we, we do have capacity in that area. I, I agree with Mr. Rosenthal. Um, and it's, given the constraints we have on our operating budget, um, I can't, I couldn't support building a new middle school. Um, but my question about the rezoning, uh, we talked earlier about the rezoning of the elementary school children. If we built a new elementary school, or even if we added, added additions to the existing elementary schools, that that rezoning would take place after the cohort gets through the elementary schools. So it would not impact existing students, or students who had been rezoned, which is, matters to me a lot. Um, I don't want kids who have already been rezoned to be rezoned again. I think that that's very important. Uh, what about in this middle school scenario, when we're looking at rezoning? Can we get through a cohort and get through kids who have been, already been rezoned, to not rezone them again?
I'd have to do some more research to find out. I think that the policy talks about, uh, students within, within the same grade level. As far as, you know, we wouldn't want to move a student twice in elementary school. I'd have to do some more research to find out if we, if a student that was moved in elementary school could possibly move to middle school.
Yes, because if I recall, we, we put into policy that they, a student that's already been rezoned two years in a row could not be rezoned again.
Okay.
So I think, yeah, so I think that's what, I think that's what that policy is, because we were pretty deliberate about that.
Right, so I, I, I agree with Mrs. Tossan. I think if we've moved these kids once, we don't want to move them again. We need to plan if we need to do some rebalancing, and if we need to, and if we do want to fix some feeder pattern splits, which would be ideal, but we, we just need to plan and know when that time is, so that we're not, um, moving kids at every, at every school level. All, they, they need stability, that's what the purpose is.
No, that's good, thank you, thank you for that input. Okay, I think that's all I have right now, but I just really want us, and I know that, that being able to have a standalone GT Academy is going to be impacted by some things in a later feeder pattern, and whether or not we do, do some things with the academies, because I've, I've asked about that. So I just want us to keep that in mind as we're looking at, um, at later recommendations. Mr. Rice?
Well, my question is, if we're going to have a standalone GT Academy, where do the traditional students go at Quail Valley?
Uh, there would have to be a rezoning process to determine that, but the, the most likely location would be Lake Olympia.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, next recommendation.
Okay, our next area is, uh, the Kempner and Dulles feeder patterns, elementary schools. So the first recommendation is to rebuild Meadows Elementary School for approximately 800 students on the existing site. Uh, the next piece is to repurpose Barrington Place Elementary to support, uh, students during renovation or new construction projects in the area. And then the future repurpose Barrington for programmatic purposes or to meet future growth. And then to rebuild Lakeview Elementary, uh, for a, for 400 students with a core that would be expanded up to 600 on the existing site. The Meadows, uh, replacement will be needed by 2021, and then the Lakeview replacement would be by, uh, 2021, 22. With our, uh, impacts here, this is kind of all contingent upon Elementary 51, really being able to help us align that Lakeview feeder pattern. Um, on this map, uh, this is the existing Lakeview boundary, and it has a large portion that extends into the Austin feeder pattern. Yeah, over by the wall. The hope, the, the hope is, is that with Elementary 51 coming online, it'll take some of the heat off of Oyster Creek, which is currently serving as the overflow school for, for Madden. And then, those students that are in that Lakeview-Austin feeder pattern could then, you know, pending a rezoning process, feed into a school that would be in the Austin feeder pattern. Uh, that reduces the enrollment at Lakeview. And so we'd have, uh, you know, between Oyster Creek, I'm sorry, between Lakeview, Sugar Mill, and Barrington Place here, we have this, this kind of split area here, which is about 200 students. And so between, uh, basically that half of Lakeview, all of Sugar Mill, and that almost half of- And so between, basically that half of Lakeview, all of Sugar Mill, and that almost half of Barrington Place, we'd have about 1,000 students that we'd have between Sugar Mill and Lakeview. What that leaves us with over here is Barrington Place and then Meadows, and we'd, we'd be able to fit all of those students, so the Kempner portion of Barrington Place and the Meadow students into a rebuilt Meadows at 800 students. And so then Barrington Place could really serve as the swing facility for all the renovation projects in the area that would be extensive. So these are projects that the students would have to vacate the facility during construction, and so they could swing as an entire school into Barrington Place for a year, and then they'd go back to their newly renovated school afterwards. And so that's that kind of central swing location that could be used to kind of house those students and make those renovation projects go faster, because they wouldn't have to have construction teams kind of staggering the construction throughout the school. Longer-term considerations, if demographics in the area shift, the Lakeview facility could expand to 600 students to, you know, to accommodate that area with an addition. Some other considerations, again, like I alluded to before, both Town West and Sugar Mill would require some extensive renovations. And then we could have those students swing into Barrington Place, you know, for that, for those projects. Okay?
Thanks, Scott. Question from the trustees. Mr. Rosenthal.
Okay. So we've been through this a couple times, and I kind of, I kind of like the idea. Couple of questions. When everything's said and done, what happens to Barrington Place?
So after the facility is used to house the students for the renovations, we would have the ability to utilize it for programming. And by that time, we'll have some feedback on some of the programming that, that we've initiated and some continuous improvement models within that to be able to replicate programs such as, not limited to early literacy, in the more central area of our district.
Okay. And so here's the big question. Taking all the emotion and all the historical significance out of the Lakeview situation, I don't know if you can actually do that, but I, I understand. I understand it means a lot to a lot of people. I really do. But what would the scenario look like without spending $25 million to rebuild that? I'm not saying that that's what we should go do. I just, I want to, I know, I, I know, I know there's a lot of people that get upset about this, okay? But, you know, we at least have to have a conversation and, and discuss it, so we all know what we're, we're looking at.
Hopefully, I can pick this up. There's a couple different scenarios that, that could resolve this. I think that the, the recommendation, as we have it laid out, fixes two feeder pattern splits. It fixes both the Lakeview feeder pattern split and the Barrington Place feeder pattern split. And so one way that we could continue to, to fix both things is we'd have to basically serve 1,400 students between Town West and either Sugar Mill or Lakeview in some, some way, shape, or form. And so if Lakeview, Lakeview were to be repurposed, then we'd have to put an addition on Sugar Mill. And then we'd have to have a rezoning process between Town West and Sugar Mill to be able to accommodate those 1,400 students in that part of the feeder pattern. The other possibility of that is that Barrington Place would not go offline, and we would just rebuild Meadows smaller around, you know, 450 students to accommodate the existing boundary. But we would still have the Barrington, we would still have the Barrington feeder split, and we would not necessarily have to put an addition on Sugar Mill, but we would have to probably have some kind of balancing between Sugar Mill and Town West.
Because when you talk about, I'm just talking about numbers. I'm not getting into feeder patterns. And, you know, I agree, feeder patterns are important. So you're talking about two schools handling 1,400 kids. That's, that's very doable. I mean, we're building schools for 1,000 now. Okay? So that's not necessarily an issue. It's not capacity. It's, you know, capacity plus feeder pattern alignments.
Correct.
Is, is really, so I guess what I would, just so this is clear, at least I'm just speaking for myself, if, you know, before next week, if we can get some scenarios that show the capacity splits plus potential feeder patterns, you know, where all these kids would end up going and how things would be aligned, I think it would make the decision not only easier, but I think we would make a better decision. Okay. And I think that's all I have. And then one more, so, so I think, you know, it's, it's understood that Town West and Sugar Mill are going to go, undergo renovations, okay? I did not, okay, so you said, we're talking, the costs are going to come out once the, we really go through the, you know, all the PBK studies and, and the, okay.
That's correct.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. George?
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. Couple of questions. Rebuilding Meadows, you, the recommendation shows 800 students. So what is the current capacity of Meadows Elementary? 400?
Current capacity is 469.
459. That means the, the students, we are going to, we are going to bring additional students from outside of that feeder pattern currently we have, right?
That's correct.
So where are those children are going to come from?
Likely, they, they would come from Barrington Place.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And so in, in this recommend, recommendation, all the Barrington Place students, so the, the students that are in the Dulles feeder pattern would end up at a new Meadows. And then the students that are in the Kempner feeder pattern would end up either a renovated Sugar Mill or a rebuilt Lakeview.
Okay. I personally, I like that idea. And also, another question is rebuilding Lakeview with 400 capacity. Is that an elementary school, or is that a K through 1-2? What, what is it?
We're leaving it kind of flexible now, because I think we want to, we'd want to kind of explore what those programmatic options could be. It could be a small standalone elementary school, or it could be something different.
Okay. Okay. So my question to you, Mr. Perez, when you are building a 400-capacity school versus an 850 or 800, whatever, per student's building costs, is there any comparison? Obviously, the smaller it is, it's going to be more expensive, right?
Yes, sir. It's, it's not common to build a 400 elementary school. This one, we're looking at being able to expand to 600. And, you know, there, there used to be a lot of 600 elementary schools. There, most of them are not there. But there, there definitely is a cost differential. I can't tell you just right off the top of my head, but I, I know there, it's, it's all economy of scale.
Okay. So my question to you, Scott, why can't we build the, there is a need a 600 or 650 student-capacity elementary school at Lakeview site?
We could. It's just a question of the demographics of the area, because we've got a capacity at, Sugar Mill is, I'm sorry. Sugar Mill has a capacity that is 606, and Town West has a capacity that's 607. And remember, we only have 1,400 students in that area. And so we don't have the need, from a demographic standpoint, for that many seats that was in that area.
Okay. Okay. That was my question.
And I just want to add that that's looking out, it's not just current, that's looking out to 10-year horizon.
10 years. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. Okay. So this, oh, gosh. So I, you know, I, I like this solution. I like fixing the feeder pattern splits. I like keeping Lakeview Elementary as an elementary campus from the historical perspective. And I believe in the neighborhood schools, so I like keeping Sugar Mill Elementary as a neighborhood school as well. And I think those campuses are due and overdue for, for renovation. So that's, that's, that's good. I do, I, when I first looked at this, I was concerned about the, the Barrington neighborhood, because again, that's a neighborhood school in that neighborhood, and we hadn't really talked about that before. I hadn't really seen that come up as an option. And to say to those families, okay, we're going to have you all go over to Meadows, I guess goes back to Dr. Dupree's point earlier of a operational efficiency is sort of what you're looking at there. I guess, to me, that requires a little bit more, further study, in the sense of, I, I would like to know, I would, sort of as we did over in the Willeridge feeder pattern, when we were talking about reorganizing the way the schools were going to be done, I feel like, I'm, I'm just worried about the Barrington neighborhood not feeling that they have input or have knowledge about what plans might happen to them in the future. And so I just want to be sure that we have a community input opportunity for them if we're talking about repurposing that elementary school, so that they feel part of the decision and feel part of the plan forward. And I, and I guess the other piece of that, or an addendum to that, is Meadows Elementary has been a 400, 500, you said 470 or something, for a long time. And has that, has that been right-sized, I guess, to that, to, to the Meadows Place community over time? Have we had, I don't recall if, over time, it's been right-sized, that's been the right size?
So I do have the numbers for 2013, 14, 15, 14, 15, 16, and so on. 13, 14, we have 433 at Meadows. 14, 15 is 469. 15, 16 is 480. 16, 17 is 462. And 17, 18 is 437.
Okay. So it's a little bit of a...
It's up and down. So you're looking at about 3.8%, increase, and then 2.3% increase, and it dropped back down to 3.75% decrease, and then 5.4% decrease.
Thank you for those numbers, Mr. Perez. I really liked that. I couldn't write them down fast enough. Okay. So I guess I'm just sort of mulling this over in my mind. So to me, the obvious, the, the neighborhood concept at Meadows Elementary, at the 475 or whatever, 450, 500 was the right size for that. If we're going to take the decision essentially to move the Barrington neighborhood, then I understand why we need to have an 800-capacity school. I'm just nervous about it, that's all. But I do like the fact that we're fixing the feeder pattern splits, and I do like the, the way that we can use the existing schools to move kids as a unit while their school is being renovated. And I know that these schools in this area have work that's piled up for a long period of time, and I'm glad that we're, we've got a plan to get them renovated and fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Leopold, what is the capacity of Meadows Place? Not the student population. What was it built to accommodate? It was built originally to accommodate 400...
I don't know what its original design capacity, but this is the capacity number that we've been using.
Well, okay. I would like to know that. I can't believe that we built a school for 469 kids, even in 1973 or '04. And I think it's probably larger than that. I'd like to know what it is. And I think that Meadows Place is one of those communities where people really like living there, and their kids have grown up and they haven't moved yet. But that is one of our communities. It is its own city. And I think that we need to keep that school there. And building a school for 800 students to accommodate future growth now and 20 years from now is a good decision.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. So I don't know many, you, you guys answered all my questions, and I would just say that I concur. I like, I like this option. I like these recommendations. I would be interested in seeing the data that Mr. Rosenthal asked for, but I like that we're fixing the feeder splits. I like that we're maintaining Meadows Elementary. I like that we're maintaining the historical significance of Lakeview, even if it's at a smaller capacity. And I'd be interested in seeing what kind of, whether we offer some programming, like, like a pre-K1 there, or if we're going to maintain it as a, a full elementary school. So I'd be interested in seeing that. Okay. Next recommendation.
Okay. Our next recommendation is the Elkins Elementary Schools and Hightower Elementary Schools, which are north of Texas 6. So it's, it's just the elementary schools in Elkins that are north of 6, and then it's all the Hightower Elementary Schools. So the recommendation for this is to put, build an addition on Palmer for approximately 250 students, increasing the capacity from 660 to 910. The next one is to build an addition on Parks for approximately 250 students to bring the capacity to 877. Total cost is 9.8 million. Alternative recommendation is, instead of doing the additions, we construct a new elementary school in the area for 850 students to relieve both Parks and Palmer. We're looking at 40.6 million plus land acquisition there. So as far as impacts go, the additional capacity created between the two additions will keep the, the area within FC local parameters until '25, '26, which hits 122%. And then we hit 125% in '27, '28. The longer-term considerations for this, if growth exceeds the projections, the district could construct more additions on other schools that are in the area and possibly rebalance between those schools to, to balance that utilization. And again, our, our alternative recommendation is adding that new school, kind of in that Fort Bentil Road-Lake Olympia Parkway corridor. Overall utilization between Parks, Palmer, and the new school would be projected to remain below 104% over the next 10 years with the new school.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you. So I guess the question would be, what, what I, what I would hate to see is putting two additions on and then going and buying land and building an elementary school. So I think we really need to look at the timing here. When could we acquire land, get the design, the construction? Could that be done before we really start peaking in the 2021? Is that correct? Is that, is that our deadline?
I believe so.
Well, we hit, we would hit the policy parameters in, in '25, '26, between the two schools.
Okay.
That's, that's 120%. That's not 100%. It's 112%.
Okay. So we have a little time then?
Correct.
Okay. And where, where is Palmer and Parks at right now as far as capacity numbers?
So the, I keep losing my mic. Our capacity at Palmer is 660, and our capacity at Parks is 627.
What are the utilization numbers currently?
Currently, we're 106 at Parks and 188 at Palmer.
Wait, 100 and what?
108. So we hit, we hit at, at Palmer, or at Parks, rather, we hit 128% in 1920.
So that's, again, that's, that's my question. Is, could you get a new one online, or do you have to build these two new additions and then also build a new school? And then the second question is, what else could, what other areas could potentially feed that new school?
I think it depends on what your, what your preferences are as far as areas go.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Because there's, there's some...
That might not be something we want to...
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Because that's a, that's a land issue, so, okay. All right. Oh, and then there was some talk, again, this gets back to, and I guess, you know, Oscar, this is that same question that probably can't answer, but there was some talk about we'd also need money to expand the core spaces in both those schools, in Parks and Palmer.
Yes, sir. There is a possibility. The one thing that I do want to clarify that... The one thing that I do want to clarify, that on 2014 had an addition for Palmer. So what we've done already, based on this information that was, what we've been gathering, is we've already earmarked some of the program contingency where we shifted that money, so that we can utilize some money that was in there, and then whatever addition we would need from 2018.
Okay. So, even with the additions, so let's just say that in 1920, we have additions there. We still, we're still going to go over 120% at some point?
Yes, it's just, it's just a question of whether you want to rezone within the area, because we can, we can handle more students at Goodman, Parks, Burton, Quail Valley Elementary School in that area. It's just, do you want to put the additions on Parks and Palmer and not have to rezone?
Okay. So that, that's really what it comes down to?
Because that, that number that I have up on the slide, where we hit, we hit 122% in '25, '26 is aggregated across all those schools in that area.
Okay. Because again, you know, you'd hate to, you'd hate to build additions and then have to build a new school, and then those schools end up way underutilized, and you're sitting there with $10 to $15 million of additions that you kind of wasted.
Okay.
So, to me, that's kind of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. All right, just to build on what Mr. Rosenthal was saying, so this 122% in '25, '26 is across all the, Quail Valley Elementary, Lantern Lane, Palmer?
It's, it's across Palmer, Parks, Goodman, and Burton. I didn't pull Quail Valley and Lantern Lane into it.
Okay, so it's, it's the...
It's kind of the immediate area.
All right. So it's the, it's the Hightower schools, and half of Palmer is in Elkins?
That's correct.
Okay. But even with those two additions, and averaging out the attendance, we're still, the, yeah, zone kids, we're still at 122?
That's correct.
So it, that, the additions don't appear to be a long-term solution. Okay. Yeah, so, I think we need to look about, look, look for opportunity for a new school on this one, it seems like.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Berdine.
So those were my concerns as well, is just building additions that still wouldn't solve the problem long-term. I'm just reluctant to do that. I have a few concerns, but I'm not going to say the same thing over and over, just, I agree with the both of you. I don't know if that's going to be where we need to be in the future, so, in the long-term future anyhow.
Mr. George.
Yeah, thank you. One of my question is, you were talking about putting additions to Palmer and Parks. So what about the core building or core area? Do you need improvement also, or you just could add the addition, we don't need any improvement? We don't need to spend money there?
No, sir, we need to study that to make sure, whether we do or we don't. But I, I would think, I've been in both those schools, they're fairly small.
Okay, okay. And somebody mentioned the capacity for both, what was that again? I'm talking about Parks.
Parks is 660, and Palmer is 660, and Palmer is 627.
Okay, so we never had any, we didn't look into any land available or not in that area, correct? We haven't?
Yes, sir, we're actively looking, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. George. What is the dashed line on the...
That's just, that would just be kind of the area that we would be looking for possible sites in, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I, I think I agree with my colleagues. I'm concerned about putting, I, I know that it's going to be, you know, a hit to our operating budget to open a new school, but I can't see putting $10 million and what that's going to cost into additions, and then still, when we need a school anyway, in the next seven years, looks like, seven years out. Dr. Dupree, did you have something?
Scott, can you clarify, do we have room in Goodman and Burton to rezone? If we do those additions and we still have growth, can we bring it all back down by rezoning into Goodman and Burton?
If, if the growth happens as projected, and we put the additions online, we beat 122% in '25, '26.
Including...
Including rezoning within those.
That was the question earlier.
Sure, and the other thing that I want to add is that it is possible to put additions on other schools in the area, but it would just require more rezoning.
So, we could put additions on Goodman and Burton?
Correct.
And then, and then balance enrollment, balance, yeah.
So that's, that's essentially your school in additions.
So why wasn't that a recommendation?
Because it's not needed until '25, '26. I, I think that it's one of those...
So I get it. I mean, we're, we're planning, you know, the point is, we had a 2014 bond, and that took us through 2018, and then we're going to have a 2018 bond, and then we look at that taking us through the next five years or so. I mean, that's typically how the planning is done, and so I get that. My only concern is, is what has been expressed in here before, and what my concern is, as expressed earlier, is whether, you know, what is, how are we going to be able to continue to pass bonds, and to what extent do we want to do that? So, I just think that that's, that's something that I'm thinking about, is that it's, you know, it's seven years out, I get it, and typically we're planning for a bond to take us to about five years, maybe six. And so that's maybe in the next, in the next planning phase. But I think we have to consider it now, because like Mr. Rosenthal said, you know, we don't want to build $10 million worth of additions and then, and then have to put, need a school and not have needed those additions, especially if we have to expand core. That's a big deal. That's what you said, right, Mr. Perez? It's not an easy thing to do.
Yes, ma'am, it takes some effort.
Okay. Mr. Rosenthal, do you have something to add?
Yeah, and just, just to kind of follow up on that, so you're probably looking at more than 4.9 million or 5 million for each one of those, so now you're talking about four of them, right?
Yeah.
So now, now the difference is getting smaller between that and a new school.
And, and that's, and it gets more expensive as we get out in time, so. Mrs. James, you have something want to add?
Well, I'll just piggyback on that, and I wouldn't, I think I'd like to look again at the PASA data in that region to see what the home projections are, because it looks like there's no, I, you know, on that road, on that map right there, there aren't very many roads, when they're expected to be a whole lot of roads. So that might mean, you know, sooner rather than later, I guess. Not, you know, I don't want to be too aggressive in the building schools and then have empty ones, but I, I also don't want to, I don't want to be caught short.
Well, and that's another, so we built Heritage Rose. We thought the, we thought the development was going up, it didn't. We hit, you know, the market took a hit, and the development didn't happen, and the school sat half-utilized for several years. So are we in contact with the developers of that area? Do we know? Have we spoken to them? Do we, is it, what is, what are they saying?
Yes, ma'am, we, we have spoken. And we have information we'll be bringing forth.
Okay, all right. Because in my mind, that's what's going to inform the decision. Okay, anybody else? Next recommendation? No.
Okay, our next feeder pattern is Marshall. Our recommendation for this area is innovative programming, place and develop programs throughout the Marshall High School feeder pattern to support the students. The form of this programming should be determined through a collaborative process between the district, parents, community members, and students within the Marshall feeder pattern. We should begin implementing this immediately. We don't have any facility impacts in this area.
Do we have questions from the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal.
So, programming-wise, how do we expect to fill 50% of those elementary schools? Because that's what we're looking at. Overall, you got a 48, a 47, 68, and a 70, so 50-some percent. So we have, out of those four schools, we have basically two of them that are empty.
Beth, are you going to take this one?
There's a number of different options that we could consider, one of which may be what we proposed to the board. Right now, we're piling and, piloting an early literacy center in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern, and so that may be something that we can consider.
Right, but the problem is, where are you going to draw the kids from? Because unless there's a whole bunch of kids going to private schools in here, this is how many kids you got living in there. So you're just talking about shuffling the deck, you know, shuffling the chairs around, you know? You still have to somehow attract kids into this area from other areas, or these numbers aren't going to change. They might change, they might go up at one school, but then they'll go down at the, at the school where kids are leaving. So you got an issue. I know nobody wants to talk about it, but you got an issue. You got two half-empty schools, or two empty schools. So that's why, you know, I don't think programming is going to solve this. I think you're just going to be moving kids around in the same area. So I, I don't think this is a viable plan.
Yeah, I have a quick question. In front of Glover Elementary, there is some developments going on there, you know, the houses are being built there. Anybody know how many houses? That's all new houses. I just recently driving, drove by, I saw that happening.
I can look at the PASA data and get back to you.
Okay. And so there's a new development coming up there. So I don't know who, where they are going to be zoned, but that's going to bring, I don't know how many, but I would like to know that information. So that also can add to this concern Mr. Rosenthal just mentioned. So, thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Oh, can I just, it's...
You can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, again, if, if you have programs in here that are going to be a magnet, you know, for kids all over the district, that's fine. But, you know, it's got to be something on that scale, unless, unless you're going to have this massive development coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Okay, Mrs. James.
And I, this is just an idea, brainstorm, do we, is, is there a way that some of that space can be used for the, to, with the need from Palmer and Parks, or to relieve Palmer and Parks?
Yes, absolutely. It would just, it would be through a rezoning process.
And it would create...
And it would create some feeder splits.
Yeah, I don't like...
Unless the whole system were moved with it.
Unless the...
Unless it was a comprehensive change, looking at elementary, middle school, and high school, keeping it all in alignment.
Mr. Berdine.
I agree with Mr. Rosenthal. I think that there is some things there we need to talk about. Although if I'm understanding the early literacy correctly, we would be attracting students that are younger than kindergarten, correct?
Well, it would be pre-K, kindergarten I, so we could draw the pre-K, kindergarten I students from the feeder pattern into one facility, and then you have second through fifth grade, possibly.
Okay.
That, that's the, the, the programming piece that we would look at for early literacy. That wouldn't be the only program that we could possibly consider. There, there may also be a viability for dual-language programming as well, if, if we thought about something like that. But none of that has been specifically explored. We would need to really do a study to see what programming would be appropriate.
Right. I was just thinking if it was going to be ages younger than, obviously said pre-K than kindergarten, then we'd be bringing in new students, otherwise we'd be possibly passing students around, so. Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. I would just like to make the comment, it's difficult for us sitting here to make decisions projecting into the future, because neighborhoods do regenerate themselves. And we can do, we can have program changes, and we could even have open enrollment and allow students from Stafford or HISD to attend those schools. And to the extent possible, if I don't see anything to the contrary, and we can afford to keep those schools open, then we should, because neighborhood schools are important. So we do have to be fiscally responsible, but we have to balance that with having neighborhood schools, and to minimize rezoning. And it's, it's a delicate balance. We're trying to achieve many competing, different demands, but to the extent possible, I see nothing to the contrary of why we need to do anything with those schools, except continue to work on them and develop programs and everything else, and perhaps consider open enrollment, Dr. Dupree, for other districts. It's very important for a community to have a neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Did you want to...
Yeah, I was just going to interject. That is, one of the other ideas that would actually add numbers, that we have talked about extensively, but we haven't done any planning toward it, is we're somewhat behind in terms of full-day universal pre-K. And when we, even when you hear the state talking about pre-K, the common theme through most large districts is that even if the state funded it, most districts do not have facilities accommodated. We do, in this case, if we were to extend and do a full-day pre-K for all students, we could accommodate a significant number in that feeder pattern. So one of the offline conversations we've had is that, is that a community to begin piloting that kind of program, which would instantly utilize a vast majority capacity? But that's not a next-year or even two-year-out proposition, because then there is implications for the budget. But that's where we have the competing priorities, the budget versus what we know is also the long-term solution academically for the students. So I think between a lot of the things we've described with this plan, and come up with a number of solutions that would utilize the space and drive us towards achieving our district mission.
We also have the RISE model pre-K that we just approved, and that's, we're looking at expanding that even to two-year-olds, would give us space for that. The other thing that we've talked about, or I've heard you guys talk about, is a GT Academy for elementary. And I think that that's something that we need to explore. I don't know where we are with our, with our GT parent advisory committee and vetting some of those, but that's another thing that I think that we need to look at going forward. Because I think the studies show that GT students being educated as a cohort is the right thing to do. So as we're doing that study on our gifted and talented programs in Fort Bend, I think we need to consider that as well. So with you, Mr. Rice, I think neighborhood schools are important, but I also think we do have some opportunities for some programming that would bring new, new kids into that area. But, and that's for you guys to, to bring forth, so. Okay, thank you. Next.
Okay, our next area is the elementary schools in the Ridge Point feeder pattern. So this is just the elementary schools. We'll talk about high schools when we get to all the high school stuff. The recommendation here is to construct a new elementary school for approximately 150 students to relieve the elementary schools in the CN area. We're looking at a total cost of 40.6 million plus, plus land acquisition. This is going to be needed in '22, '23, if we kind of look at the whole area in aggregate. So the additional capacity created with one new elementary school would maintain utilization with... utilization policy until twenty-four, twenty-five, so we'd hit a hundred and, we'd hit a hundred-and-twenty-five percent in twenty-four, twenty-five, and then in twenty-five, twenty-six, we'd be at a hundred-and-forty-five in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And so, beyond the one school, there's an additional school that would likely be needed, but it's beyond that twenty-four year. So, that's our long-term consideration in that, in that area as well.
Questions from the trustees? Mr. George.
A quick question, sir. When we are planning this, we are going to be planning just eight-fifty, or option to expand to a thousand?
Yes, sir, it would be eight-fifty with a thousand core.
Core, okay. So, we are going to be building core at a thousand capacity, and then we will see how the enrollment progresses, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
One else? Mrs. James.
Okay, so, again, this is a similar situation to one we talked about, to, we talked about earlier, because this only gets us really to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year before we're out of space again. So, there's two routes, I suppose. One is plan for a second school, or plan the one school with a large enough capacity or, large enough core or ability to build, even to go beyond a thousand students, because right now, for example, I think Sullivan is built as kind of sort of a double size, I've forgotten what the...
Twelve-hundred.
Twelve-hundred, so it's built a little bit bigger, and that might buy us a little bit of time. Do we own any in this area that already, that doesn't have a school on it, or that could, a school could be built on?
The land that we own in the area is off of five-twenty-one. There's land adjacent to Heritage Rose, and then there's land adjacent to Fernery. But we do not own any land between five-twenty-one and Leonetti.
Okay, so, it becomes an access problem. We have a, is there a road being built?
It's going to be open on May thirty-first.
The road's going to be open between the Leonetti and five-twenty-one by May thirty-first?
That's what they say.
Wow. Okay, so, so that's a possibility in the future, but it's something to ponder. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have the same concern. Twenty-four, twenty-five is five years out, and then we're looking at needing another school, so at what point do we plan for that? Or do we engage the community and talk about building a school for, you know, twelve-hundred kids? I don't know, and I guess land would be the issue as well. We need to talk about what we have versus what's available. And is that going to be part of what's brought to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Rice.
I know we have twelve-hundred students at Sullivan. I think that's too many kids, and I would, I would really encourage us to look for additional, an additional site, and buy it if funds are available, and keep these as neighborhood kids. The bigger the element, the more efficient it is, but at the same time, it is, is hard to manage that, especially at that level. Elementary schools have grown over time, over the last sixty years, they've increased in size, but it's my opinion that we should look for a second elementary school there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else? Okay, next recommendation.
Karen, next area is the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. So, in this scenario, this recommendation would be repurposing Blue Ridge to support area students during renovation or new construction projects. It could be repurposed for programmatic uses and/or to address future growth. This would result in a rezoning process in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, with implementation beginning in nineteen-twenty. And so, kind of the driver here is condition of all these facilities is, you know, on that upper end, they're not quite to the point where Meadows and Lakeview are, but they're that next tier of schools right there. And so, Briar Gate, Ridge Gate, and Ridge Monal would all need extensive renovation projects, much like Sugar Mill and Town West. And so, Blue Ridge would serve as that kind of swing facility like Barrington Place would in this area, to address those projects. It would take the utilization from seventy-four percent to ninety-six percent in five years out, and then ninety-five percent ten years out, so it would, it would get us into a good utilization range for those schools. And then by consolidating students in other elementary schools and repurposing Blue Ridge, it would allow that neighborhood to campus and allow space for innovative programming or future, to address future growth in that Blue Ridge area, if Shadow Creek Ranch, you know, increases their student yields, that kind of stuff.
Okay, do we have questions on this one? Comments? Okay, next.
Okay, the next, next one is our high school conversation, and so I want to just kind of start this by kind of just reiterating, you know, kind of where we are. And so, what we're looking at now, this is the current high school utilization map. This is our, this is the twenty-six, twenty-seven data, and I did, I did want to point, in this part of the district, we're well within parameters, and so the boundary worth that we've done in the past is kind of showing its fruit, that we've been able to kind of balance all of this. The issues that we have are, of course, on the other side of the district, we have overutilization at Ridge Point, and then underutilization at High Tower, Willow Ridge, and Marshall. And so, here's our high school recommendations. So, for Ridge Point, implement an innovative scheduling approach, which would decrease Ridge Point's utilization rate. The scheduling solution would be scalable and replicable. Examples of this would be an extended schedule or a college model. The approach would require extensive planning during the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year, and it could begin as, begin as early as nineteen-twenty. PASA projects that the Ridge Point utilization does not exceed a hundred-and-twenty percent until two thousand twenty, twenty-one. For High Tower, place all academy programs on campus and consider a future placement of an early college high school. This approach would require extensive planning, again, during the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year, and could begin implementation as early as nineteen-twenty. Marshall, consider future placement of an early college high school. It would still maintain its attendance boundary and implement that program that would serve existing students and other students throughout the district. This approach would require extensive planning, again, during the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year, and then could begin as early as nineteen-twenty. So, for Willow Ridge, also consider placement of an early college high school at Willow Ridge. Willow Ridge High School would maintain its attendance boundary and implement early college program that would serve those students and other students throughout the district. And again, we would require extensive planning in eighteen, nineteen, and this could go into effect as early as nineteen-twenty. Some more details to this, so, so the primary recommendation here is to rezone the currently-zoned area around High Tower to other schools in the area, and allow capacity for the academy program participation only at High Tower. The alternate recommendation is to continue with the current attendance boundary, and while adding limited seats for academy programming. And again, this would have extensive planning in eighteen, nineteen, with implementation beginning in nineteen-twenty. So, our impacts with the programmatic changes to High Tower, Marshall, and Willow Ridge, it will be changes in utilization to these schools. High Tower may ultimately house all academy programs, drawing students district-wide, and changing the programmatic capacity, considering we can change the city based on space needs. Centralizing these programs will provide better collaboration among students in different academies and among specialty teachers. Ridge Point facing overutilization in the coming years, it needs to address its high enrollment. Creating an innovative, flexible schedule will relieve the projected overutilization and offer students expanded flexibility for their schedules. For example, a flexible schedule will allow students to elect to take extra coursework, take classes later or earlier in the day in order to work or participate in any extracurriculars. This innovative solution would serve as a pilot program for the district, and with the success, it could be possible to expand and replicate this type of flexible scheduling to more schools in the district. So, that's that.
All right, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. I'll take one thing at a time. As far as the flexible scheduling at Ridge Point, I think this is a very, and one of the things I like about it, well, several things. One is, we don't have to go spend a hundred-and-twenty or so million dollars for a new high school, and I think it gives the district a chance to be incredibly creative, and I think it allows parents and students, it would allow parents and students a lot of choice as to when they take classes, what activities they participate in. It gives parents flexibility if they, you know, drive their kids or pick their kids up from school, or, yes, I know it's high school, but it's still... And I just think it would be an interesting model to explore. It's going to take a lot of work on the district's part to really see if it's possible, because there'd be a lot of moving parts. But I think if it works, it'll be almost like kind of getting kids ready for college, you know? And I think, as a pilot, it could, you know, then be rolled out to other schools where we're having some of these utilization issues, or at least where we will in the future. So, I like that idea, that I hope that the research into this and some of the ideas make it possible. The High Tower situation, I kind of like that idea. I like consolidating the academies there. I think it, it solves, it solves a couple of issues. One is the competition for top ten percent, because if you start asking kids that who are zoned to Dulles, you know, with that academy there, just the regular kids, the regular zone kids, they don't have top ten percent. And so, just like with, with, we talked about, the research showing that GT kids do better when they're amongst their cohorts, I think with these specialized academies where you have kids that are really driven, I think this, I think it'll make High Tower a pretty unique place. And one thing I would like the district to consider is, a couple of years ago, we had some people, and I don't even know what prompted it, but we had a whole bunch of speakers talking about a fine arts academy. And I think this might finally be the chance to do. I'll tell you, I was not for that at the time, but I've thought about it. You know, I think the arguments are, well, you'll take a lot of the top talent out of each high school, and you'll suck them away at this academy. But then there's the other side of the coin, is maybe the kids, well, first of all, you don't know that top kids are going to necessarily go. They may want to stay at their school. Again, it's choice, okay? But the other thing is, if those kids do decide to move on, the kids that were always, you know, the second chair in the orchestra, you know, the second fiddle, you know, pun intended, they get their chance, you know? And, and so I think it's a, I think it's, again, it's providing choice, and I know that there's, I personally know people who have moved out of the district or used addresses to get into HSPVA, and I think, you know, this could maybe rival that in the future. So, I like, and I'm, and I'm good with the other ones as well, so, thank you.
Mrs. James.
Okay, well, I'm not quite there yet. Thanks, Dave. So, I guess I'm a little more, I guess my first question is, was a rebalancing between Ridge Point and High Tower looked at? Was it considered, and what did that look like? That's my first question. Because the problem we're trying to solve is an over, overpopulation at Ridge Point.
Anytime we use rezoning and any options, the feedback was negative.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of got, I got that from my email inbox. I guess the, so, the, 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 I guess the, so, okay, so, the answer is that that wasn't a community favorable idea, so it wasn't looked at? Is that what I'm gathering?
It was looked at. It was, it was considered by the committee. The committee, they, they did like the idea of rezoning to balance enrollment. They did.
They did like it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, between High Tower, and I'm, was it between High Tower and Ridge Point, or?
There was, there was strong support for, and, into that mix.
That's right, okay. Elkins. Okay. And is that, all right, well, I guess I'd be interested to see some numbers on that, and to see what that looked like, having no, no, please don't fill my inbox with messages, but I just want to understand what that is. Partially because I feel concerned that we've created an artificial barrier on Highway Six, and I feel that that's just an artificial barrier, Highway Six. We have kids that cross ninety-nine, we have kids that cross fifty-nine, we have kids that cross Highway Six and other places, so to me, it's not, it's an artificial barrier. I also have concern for these currently-zoned High Tower kits, and they are, they live in that neighborhood, and the schools in that, you know, right there, and if we are doing section number two of this proposal, then they're having to leave their neighborhood, potentially to go to school unless they choose an academy placement. I guess there's a scenario, an alternate scenario, where they would stay there, but again, I don't know what the numbers on that look like, so I guess, I think, I feel like I would need some more information about that. I also feel like, and this is where, again, another, where I guess I need more information, the academy programs, to me, the secondary benefit of them, the primary benefit has been a unique program where a student could study or look into something that they're particularly interested in, like you said, Mr. Rosenthal. But I think a secondary, and I think that's great, a secondary benefit has been that kids, that those programs are portable, and that those kids can, if they want to move to a different campus, they can have that opportunity, and maybe that spread, I guess it's not a very, I'm thinking out loud here, it's not a very efficient way for, to do transportation, but it has provided options, I guess, of choice, an option of choice for to go to different high schools within the district, for whatever that reason might be. So, I'm not quite there as to why it would be good to combine them. I do know that, we've talked about this in the policy committee, how do we protect the zone kids from the, from the, in the top ten percent from the academy, and that's been, we haven't, we don't have a solution for that yet, and maybe this solves that. So, I'm not there, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not there yet. I also would, just, another comment or question is, I'm not too clear on the early college high school. I've heard it talked about in the sense of, we've applied at these campuses to have it, have one there, but I don't really know what that means for the kids that are zoned there, what it means, you're talking about bringing other kids in again, so again, that, what's the impact of that? And I'm not sure what, what that looks like. Not, I, of the kids earning college credit while they're in high school, hopefully working towards their associate degree, getting themselves on the path to college, but I guess I don't fully understand what it means. So, I feel, for this whole page, I need a little more information or some help.
Mr. Burden.
So, I'm really excited about the Ridge Point High School innovative, innovative schedule approach. I think it's a great idea. Mr. Rosenthal said, and I agree, it provides us... I think it's a great idea, Ms. Rosenthal said, and I agree, it provides us, it's innovative. Education shouldn't look like it does today in the future, so we're going to have to do something different. I think it may engage students more. I know when I went to college, I really struggled with the college schedule at first. I know a lot of students struggle with the college schedule, so maybe this is the way to kind of work them in, so to speak. So I'm really happy about that. I think that's huge. I think that we can really be a leader, maybe even in the state of Texas, or I know in the state of Texas, if not our own district in our area, with an approach like this. Feel confident that we can get this down as an administration. Moving on to Hightower High School, once again, the top 10% has always been a concern of mine. For those zoned students who cannot compete, once again, students of like minds can help one another, and I would like to see those be able to push, push each other into the I'm good with the rest of it so far. That's all I got to say at this point.
Mr. George.
Thank you, Ms. Tassan. Yeah, to me, I will echo Mr. Rosenthal and Burdine. So, flexible schedules and college planning, college schedule and stuff, I like it, but I'd like to know a bit more about it, what is it like, you know? And how it is going to impact and how we will implement something like that. And I totally agree, education 10 years from now is not going to be like what we see today. And even my son's told me the same thing. He said he got a seven or class and, you know, most of the kids come and sleep in the class and all that stuff. So if we can train them a little bit, you know, college schedule, that is, I believe it is a wonderful idea, but I'd like to know how we are planning to implement that, what kind of impact it's going to have on those students who are going to be, you know, affected by it. So absolutely, I like the idea. And when it comes to Hightower High School, there are numerous reasons why I like this idea. Because just, Mr. Burdine mentioned about 10%. And also in academies, something I watched, actually, and I have seen students zoned to that school being, some students felt like, oh, these are some elite kind of program or elite students, maybe they didn't have access to the same class, or so and so forth. And so I believe, and also for the stability and better utilization of the resources, including transportation, I believe so many reasons I understand I like the idea of a standalone academy program, and I support that. And like somebody mentioned, I like to learn more about early college. I like to understand more about it, maybe I like to have conversations with people who are working, and so how it is going to impact, because we are talking about a program, I heard about it, I have some kind of an idea, but I'd like to learn more about it. But overall, this is encouraging, and most of the ideas I support. Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
Ms. Ayvedra, how many of the total academy programs that exist within Fort Ben ISD, how many are currently residing at Hightower High School? Two.
Two.
What percentage of the academies is that?
Troy, do we have the percentage?
Thirty-three percent of all the academies are at Hightower. I believe the medical academy is there, is that right? And that's in close proximity, as close as we can get to the medical center. And those students take trips to the medical center as part of their curriculum. I recall a few years ago when we had parents here very agitated about having academy kids in with the regular kids like me because of the 10% rule. And that is a rule that's been imposed by, I guess, the higher coordinating board, and it's something that we have to pay attention to. So combining the academies in one location, I think, is something that deserves serious consideration. Last night, along with members of the E-Team and Dr. Dupree and Mrs. Tassan, I had the opportunity to attend the HEB Education Excellence Awards. And while there, I visited with the board president of Humboldt ISD. And they commented that they have flexible scheduling at Kingwood High School. And she admitted that that's not something that they normally would have gravitated to had it not been for Hurricane Harvey, which put that school out of commission for at least half a year. But now that they have done that, they're very, very, they're very pleased, and they have embraced that, and I believe they're continuing that. So I think it's something that bears consideration, especially if we're going to consider putting schools in storefronts or next to a daycare facility. I don't see that it's that much of a stretch to consider flexible scheduling. And I really do think that's something that we've got to take a look at, because at the end of the day, once these recommendations have been made, and the board has voted on that, and I suppose sometime soon, administration will ask the board to vote to consider holding a bond election in November. And the constituents of the Fort Ben Independent School District will decide whether or not that bond will pass or not. And so as trustees, we have to be careful to touch the public's appetite for a bond with the need for new facilities and renovated facilities. I think Fort Ben ISD has done a very good job of managing its bond indebtedness. We do have a standard in poor's AA+ bond rating, which helps us to secure very favorable interest rates. We have one of the lowest combined ad valorem tax rates in the region. And I think we're fully 20 cents per hundred lower than our next-door neighbor KD ISD, which would be a peer district. That's a lot. We don't have any extravagant athletic facilities. We really don't. We don't have any $100 million football stadiums or anything like that. In Fort Ben ISD, we've been focused on education. We've been focused on educating our kids. Tax rate. We are under severe budget constraints by the lawful but awful public school finance system currently in place. Our property tax growth at one of our workshops is projected to be an anemic 2.5% per year. And it, hopefully, the state will come in to pick up the shortfall, but it will take at least nine months, I'm sorry, 12 months for that. But our spending is constrained, and public school finance is not going to be fixed anytime Anyway, I'm prepared to give a class on public school finance to anyone who has the stomach for it, but I will now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. So, I'm going to take the blame right now for the Ridge Point recommendation, because that was my parking lot idea. And the reason it was my parking lot idea is because rezoning is the only thing that anyone wants to do, and I guarantee you, least of all, this board wants to, least of all. As Mr. Rice says, we work very hard to stay focused on teaching and learning, educating our kids, and the least favorite part of our job is to have to talk about facilities and rezoning. So it's not something that we enjoy. If we are going to focus on teaching and learning and programming, then we have to start considering ideas like this. We can't keep moving our kids around from one box to another every three to five years. And the only way we're going to get, where we're hopefully having to do that less and less at the high school level, is if we try something like this and see how it goes. I have three kids at home. All of them have a device this size that provides them the answer to any question they have in the whole wide world. And so I think the way our kids think, and the way they find information, and the way they process, is very different than I did, probably any of the rest of us did in this room. And so we've got to start thinking about what education's going to look like in the future. And I said earlier, we, you know, we can't keep passing billion-dollar bonds every five, six, seven years. We have got to come up with a way to provide our students an education that is innovative and is different. And this allows us to explore that. As Mr. Rice said, I attended the HEB Awards last night as well, and the speaker was Salman Khan. Most of you have heard of Khan Academy. And he now provides, and his mission, he said that his mission was to provide a free education to every student on the planet Earth. He's doing that. He's doing that by having these lessons offered free through Khan Academy and having them translated to, into languages all over the world, Swahili. I mean, it was amazing, it's amazing to watch the kids who are benefiting from that. And we offer Khan Academy to our students in this district, and it's one of the ways that they learn. It's one of the ways my kids learn. If there's a gap in our students' education, then they go online and they pull up Khan Academy, or YouTube, or whatever, wherever the lesson is taught, and that's, that's how they're, a lot of times, filling those gaps. And it becomes increasingly difficult for our teachers to go back and reteach because of the schedule that the state curriculum keeps our teachers on. That's just a fact. I know we've all experienced it. I've been to conferences with my kids' teachers, and it's, it's very difficult. So, I think that we've got to try something new, and I think this keeps kids from being rezoned, and I think it provides some flexibility. Doesn't have to be split scheduling. It, that's what Humboldt did. I had the honor of judging the boards this year, the five finalists, Humboldt was one of them, and I talked at length with them about their split schedule, which is, it was literally a split schedule, which is very different even than what we're talking about here. We're talking about something different that can be developed, and it can be developed with the community, hand in hand with the community. I have two kids that go to Ridge Point, full disclosure. They're going to graduate next year and the year after. And then I have a middle schooler that's going to be at Ridge Point in a couple of years. So we feel it, we, they feel the pressure of the, of the schools being over capacity. They feel the pressure of Ridge Point being over capacity. So I know firsthand, you know, what the kids are going through there, and what the teachers are going through there, and what the administrators are going through there. So I think this is an opportunity for us, you know, we're, we're not outstanding school district for nothing. And I really do believe it's because we've pushed the envelope on some things, and it's not always comfortable, takes us out of our comfort zone. But when you ask the kids, this is what they want. When you ask the kids' opinions, this is what they want. And we did ask them. And this is what they're looking for. They're looking for the future of education, and I think we have to take steps to give it to them. If it doesn't work, then we can always rezone. I mean, we can always rezone. So, I support it, obviously, and I support, I support taking these kinds of bold steps and looking in new directions to, to offer innovative solutions for our kids, and I think this is one of the ways we have to do it. The Hightower option I like for all of the reasons earlier. I think having consolidated academies is long overdue. When we aligned feeder patterns three years ago, this was probably the most feedback we got, was from, from, you know, around the academies. The entire purpose of the top 10% rule, whether we agree with it or not, was to allow students at more struggling campuses an opportunity to attend a four-year college. And we're taking that away from them. When we, when we put an academy program in a school, we are literally taking that away from them. I just don't think that's the right thing to do. In addition to that, as earlier I said, with the middle school standalone GT Academy, I think when you put a school within a school, or a program like that within a school, then you're creating tensions between the students, and I just don't think it's good for kids. So I support the consolidation. And my one question is, you've recommended potential early college high schools at Hightower, Marshall, and Willeridge. Are you recommending at, putting an early college high school, one of those, or are it all three of those, or potentially Marshall and Willeridge?
We can still determine what that would be, whether, so we could move forward with all three, we could move forward with two, or we could move forward with one. That's still an option for us to consider. Approved by TEA for our planning here. We do need to make a decision about how many we want to move forward with fairly soon, but that is something that we can still consider.
So I think it would help us to get that information, as requested earlier, on what, what that might look like in one or more schools, and a little bit more information about what the TEA planning period entails. What exactly is it that we're going to be looking at? And how is it going to impact bringing students into those schools? I think it would be helpful for the whole board to see that, so. Okay, I think that's all I have. So your last slide, I guess, is just a summary of all of the recommendations. Do any of the board members have any additional questions or comments at this point? Mr. George.
You know, last maybe, maybe a month or so, you know, we had a lot of, lot of feedback from the community, like Ms. James was mentioning. One of the concern, or one of the discussion I heard from a number of parents, they said our neighboring schools doesn't do what we are doing, like field alignment, like every three, four years, five years, things of that nature. Mr. Rice just mentioned about the, one was mentioned KD, KD ISD. And so I looked into it, and, and I just come to, this is maybe not a question, it is more like a statement. I come to find out, of course, you know, their tax rate is 1.5, 5166 versus ours is 1.32. And Mr. Bass said, can you put in, say, a half a million dollar home? What is the tax difference when it comes to that 20 cents almost?
It's going to be several hundred dollars, I think, but let me just check.
Because I thought it is important for people to know that, because...
20 cents is $1,000 on a half-million dollar home in property taxes.
How much?
In property taxes, $1,000.
$1,000, that's what I thought, yeah. $1,000 more they're paying. And also last bond program for KD was around 700-plus million. We had 484. And they're already preparing another 600 million plus for the 2018 bond. So obviously, I'm just echoing Mr. Rice's saying, I'm not an expert in it, but I thought, I thought we did a very good job as far as managing taxpayer, not letting them in too much of a debt. So I thought that is some information, you know, people talk to me should know, that's why I like to say that on the record. Thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. George. Okay, since we have been going two and a half hours...
Okay, since we have been going two and a half hours, I think we're going to go ahead and break for closed session, and then we'll come back and finish up the information items. Thank you, Mr. Leopold. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. We appreciate all the work, and Ms. Ledford. And thank you to the committee members who served. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and those sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.